The same five councilmen online.
Okay, Secretary, I certify the quorum for for the chair for the joint public hearing. Moving to Planning and Zoning Commission certification of quorum.
This is Commissioner Cade and all of the Planning and Zoning Commissioners are here. We have a quorum. Thank you.
So you certified their quorum for the purpose of the meeting tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're a different kind of a meeting. We're joint special meetings now, so this is, things changed a little bit. And the introduction of agenda and format, I'll ask the staff to, Martin, I'll give us your take. Introduction of agenda and format of the hearings.
Thank you, Mayor. So for each of our joint special meeting items, there will be a call to order, followed by staff report, and applicants will have their opportunity to present. Then we'll have public comments and either support or opposition to, and then followed by council commission and staff discussion, after which we will transition into a city council meeting, where the city council will have the opportunity to vote to either approve the request as presented, approve with conditions, deny the request, or to table the item. For tonight's joint special meeting, we have three items. The first is an expansion to a previously approved conditional use permit at a microbrewery within the Light Industrial Zoning District located at 4081 Rice Dryer Road. The second is for a self-service auto wash within the Shadow Creek Ranch Plain Development located at 11219 Shadow Creek Parkway. And then the third is for a gas station and self-service auto wash within the Shadow Creek Ranch Plain Development located just down the road from the second item at 12700 Shadow Creek Parkway. We will go to the first one and hand it back over to you, sir. Thank you.
Okay, joint special meeting number one. PC Chair, would you please present this for our consideration tonight?
Joint Special Meeting Number One is a request by Val Canista, I probably said that wrong, I'm sorry, of Valance's Brewing Company applicant and owner for approval of a conditional use permit, CUP, to allow the expansion of an existing microbrewery production facility within the Light Industrial M1 District on approximately 1.0706 acres of land. The general location is 4081 Rice Dryer Road. Thank you, Mayor.
Moving into our agenda to item A, application information case summary. Item one is our staff report.
You, Mayor, and members of the City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission. Again, this is Lawrence Guacu with the Community Development Department. This request is from Valance's Brewery for an expansion of their existing microbrewery facility. They had a previous approval for a conditional use permit to construct the original one, and it was for a 2,000 square foot microbrewery, and that was granted in 2015. And so this request is specifically for the expansion of the existing facility. It would be a 3,000 square foot expansion to the one that was built in 2016. The subject property is located along Rice Dryer Road. And as you can see here, this is a view of the connection between Rice Dryer Road and the subject property, the proposed expansion will be going on the left side and will be partially covering the building behind it, which is a hotel. And so the subject property has an underlying land use of industrial and is surrounded by public and semi-public and industrial land uses. It is zoned light industrial with the intent to permit a variety of light industrial uses. Moving on to the next slide, the proposed, this is a view of the proposed addition. It's shown in red, it's the 3,000 square foot addition to the existing facility. And together, the total size of the facility is going to be 5,000 square feet, staying under the maximum 15,000 square feet for microbrewery permitted by the Unified Development Code. Here is a view of the proposed elevations for the expansion. It's going to be very similar to what is existing. It would be a metal building with stone cladding on certain portions. And so staff has reviewed this request based on the conditions for approval as lined in the Unified Development Code, and it's been found to comply with both the Comprehensive Plan and the UDC. The property is already plotted and has existing utilities. So again, it conforms to conditional, the requirements for approving conditional use permit. It's consistent with the zoning, it preserves the existing character, which is mostly industrial and commercial. It's, we don't anticipate any impact to traffic and it meets the standards for the zoning district. And so based on that, staff is recommending approval of the requested CUP. And that concludes staff report. Thank you.
Moving to item number two, which is the applicant's presentation. Why am I getting air? Councilmember Little, would you introduce the applicant?
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant, Valie Canista, has signed up to speak tonight. So are you online, Mr. Canista?
Yes, sir. I appreciate you allowing me to.
On your phone and your computer, do you mind hanging up your phone?
Just came back in now.
It is the speaker on your, your phone, I think. I'm trying to.
All right, can you hear me now?
So we're getting a feedback loop on, on your end. Try turning the speakers down on your. Val, are you there?
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right, sorry about that. But once again, Val Canista, I'm at 3004 Summit Springs Lane in Pearland, Texas. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Planning and Zoning Commission and Joint Public. I appreciate the opportunity to present the expansion of Valance's Brewing Company production facility this evening. I feel this expansion will add value to the city of Pearland, especially to Rice Dryer Road. Rice Dryer recently had several new businesses move into the city of Pearland, which obviously shows the growth to this area of the city, and has resulted in road expansion and improvements to the city to accommodate the new businesses. And I feel that the addition and the increase of our production facility expansion is going to do a great improvement to the city of Pearland. I appreciate your thoughts and consideration for expansion.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, that completes the applicant's presentation.
The Planning Commission, City Council, and the staff have an opportunity to share some thoughts that they may have. Let's start with the Planning and Zoning Commission.
We could see if there's anyone that's signed up to speak for or against us.
Oh, is there another speaker?
I don't know. We need to check before we move on to the next part of our meeting.
Mayor Reed and Councilmember Little, I did not show anybody signed up. But Josh, if you've got someone on your list, please let me know.
We do have a potential speaker.
Does it look like it, Mayor? So we can move on to council and planning discussion.
Okay, so we're with speakers, proposed speakers, right?
Correct.
Okay, with that, with that resolved, Planning and Zoning, I mean, the Planning Commission, the City Council, and the staff will complete their discussion. And if you'll remember, the items that we talked about, the previously items, public hearings, joint public hearing was developing the background information that eventually grew up to where we are under joint special meetings. So decision making is here. In the previous meeting, we did not make decisions. So with that information in the record, the Planning Commission, Council, and staff get together on their comments. Planning and Zoning Commission Chair, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, do any of y'all have comments or questions? Commissioner Henricks, you want to go first?
I don't have any comments.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Earls? No? Boswell?
Comments.
All right. Rather than call the roll, I'm just going to be quiet and let you all talk if you need to.
Commissioner Fuentes is here. I thought we, we passed this back in 2015. I noticed that the notes said that they were established in 2016. I hope that's correct. I don't go there. I have relatives that do, and they speak very highly of the establishment. So I look forward to the expansion and I look forward to, to visiting there then soon. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, any other comments, Madam Chair?
I don't think so, Mayor. Thank you.
Moving to City Council, let's start off with Councilmember Owens here.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that.
He'll start here.
I don't know what the capacity is for expanding this. Is it quite a bit of capacity or a little bit or whatever? But basically, I really don't have a problem with it. I think, you know, we need to have some more development in this area, I guess. So I don't have anything to add to it, Mayor. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I'm very supportive of this. I think with so many of our businesses going out of business or struggling right now, I'm glad to see that we have a business applying to expand, and I don't want to hinder their progress, especially right now. Val and his brewery have been very supportive of the community. I see them at a lot of events all the time. So, you know, we all need to support our existing local businesses, and I think this is a great business, and I totally support this. Thank you.
Councilmember Little?
Comment, Mayor, other than I support the expansion. Glad to see you doing well. That's all.
Councilmember Carbon?
I think this is a good expansion.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Val, appreciate what you've brought to the city of Pearland. I've said it a million times before, we don't have enough to do here in the city of Pearland, and I'm happy to support anything that's going to bring more entertainment options. So very supportive of this. Thank you.
Okay, staff wrap-up comments? Martin?
Mayor Reed, the only staff wrap-up that I will give to y'all is that the upcoming resolution that you will vote on does not have any conditions for approval within that resolution.
Okay. Moving in our agenda, item number C. The discussions that we've had since item, since we have begun this joint special meeting process, or the second group, it has morphed into a city council new business item in which the city council must make a formal decision. And I have asked Councilmember Carbon if he would present this, that this item, new business item, for our consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution R 2020-CUP 20-00009. So moved.
Second, Hernandez.
In a second, I think we go right straight to a discussion, that to action. Madam Secretary, I think we have motion second on the floor.
Member Orlando? Member Orlando? Member Carbon? Member Little?
Hi.
Member Hernandez? Member Owens?
Virus, we may have to expand it again. I'll go with the yes.
Motion passes five to zero to approve resolution R 2020-CUP 20-0009.
Heavy into the zeros tonight. Moving to item number two, joint public hearing number two. I ask the Chairman of the Planning Commission to please read into the record the words printed before you for special reasons.
Number two is a request by Mohammed Darwish, applicant on behalf of BW Shadow Creek LLC owner for approval of a conditional use permit, CUP, to allow a self-service auto wash within the Shadow Creek Plain Development PD District on approximately 0.7310 acres of land. The general location is 11219 Shadow Creek Parkway in Pearland. Oh, obviously, it's in Pearland.
Okay, we're in our agenda, item A, which is application information case summary. Staff report.
For tonight's consideration, we have the auto wash within the Shadow Creek Ranch Plain Development at 11219 Shadow Creek Parkway. This has a future land use designation of retail offices and services, and we had no public comments in either favor or opposition to the request.
Okay.
The, the project, as I said, is in retail offices and services. It's within the Shadow Creek Ranch Plain Development with a base zoning district of commercial. This is the proposed out, the proposed site plan for the property, showing the the layout of the vacuum stalls and the car wash itself, as well as the joint access with the adjoining properties going both east and west. This has been, you know, we use the criteria for the conditional use permit. Everything appears to be showing that it would be in conformance of the proposed plans. And the criteria for approval are indicating that there is no big considerations in front of us. Staff recommends approval of the requested conditional use permit.
Okay. Item number two.
Excuse me, Mayor. Hi, it's Lawrence over in the legal department. Before we go on, if I could have Martin clarify something, I apologize if I misheard.
Good.
But I, I think the agenda is for a self-service auto wash. And I think that the first slide that Ms. Cade read from said a full-service auto car wash. Maybe I misunderstand that, but if we could clarify before we go on, I want to make sure. I don't think it's changing staff's recommendation, but.
Yeah.
The agenda reads a self-service auto wash, and what is described within the staff packet is a self-service auto wash.
Thank you. I appreciate.
Certification. And we need to keep an eye on these things because this is, these are legal processes we're going through. I'll ask our mayor pro temp to introduce the applicant presentation presenter, and we'll hear the information on this particular issue.
Mr. Daniel Blancus has signed up to speak tonight. Are you there, Mr. Blancus?
I am here.
Okay.
Excuse me, again, if I, hi, if I, it's Lawrence over in the legal department. I thought that Mohammed Darwish signed up to speak on behalf of the applicant presentation.
Now, Mr. Blancus submitted a request to speak.
Mohammed Darwish is my D E A. I guess as a student, he has this project, having been with Blue Wave for four years now. Along with Strat Holm, which I believe is of the Blue Wave car wash franchise.
We got our speakers fixed up. That's clear, but was a person to wish to speak for is an applicant?
Blancus, are you going to do a presentation?
I apologize. Come again?
Are you going to, do you have any presentation tonight on your application?
I can speak on the project, but originally Mohammed Darwish was supposed to speak on this project.
Mohammed is also on the call if, on the meeting, if you want to unmute him as well.
Yes, please.
Mohammed?
Hello, this is Mohammed Darwish.
Go ahead, speak.
Hello? Hey, good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I want to faculty counseling and, you know, planning and zoning. Just to really, really, there's nothing much to add on top of what, you know, the previous, you know, presenter, you know, said. So basically, you know, we, we are really proposing here a self-service car wash within the subject property. This property has previously received the approval for a conditional use permit, but the permit got expired before the construction permit was obtained. The property currently is vacant, and we would like to seek a reapproval for the expired, you know, CUP permit so we can move forward with this project.
Mr. Briggs?
Mr. Darwish, that completes your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Mayor, we're going to move on to people wishing to speak for or against this proposal.
All right, Councilmember Little?
Is there anyone signed up, Martin, to speak for or against this?
Well, I only saw Mohammed Darwish and Daniel Blancus as people to speak for this item.
Thanks, sir. Mayor, that completes public comments.
Number B is an opportunity of the Planning Commission, the City Council, and the staff to kind of comprise their comments to, for discussion. And I'll start off with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and ask the Chair to make his comments and discussions that you think for the record.
Commissioner Wicker, do you have anything?
Just time.
Commissioner Dansby?
A comment. This is Commissioner Ashley Boswell. I don't see a need for this in that area. I feel that we do have car washes and automotive services in that area, so I would be interested in seeing something else. I'm not saying there's necessarily anything wrong with the business, but I would be interested in the closest car wash facility, like mileage-wise away, because in that Shadow Creek area, there are several places that you can go to get your vehicle washed. So I guess my concern is just, is another one needed?
Thank you. And this is Commissioner Cade. Lawrence, you did mention that you thought it might be full-serve. It says self-service, but then Mr. Darwish also said full-serve. Can we get clarification on the what type of car wash or auto wash it is, please? Lawrence?
This is Mohammed with City Staff. The request is actually for self-service car wash at this particular location. I also want to mention that this particular use has been approved by the City Council back in 2017. However, that CUP expired due to, that, due to the fact that a building permit has not been pulled from Community Development or may have not been applied for. So it's, it's already been approved before, however, it just expired. But it is self-service car wash. This is not at, this is just a self-service. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, my comment might be unpopular, but I'm still not interested in saying that was already approved. But I guess I'm just wanting to speak concerning this because I'm thinking about the types of businesses and activities that I want to see for Pearland. And when it comes to the CUP, another opportunity for something that already exists within the area, even though maybe having been approved in the past, I just want to make sure that there is a need for it. I don't want that Shadow Creek area to be overpopulated with automotive and, and car wash, whether it be full service or self-service.
I agree with, I agree with Commissioner Boswell. We actually even have another one on this agenda, just right down the street, just to add to the point she's making about how many are in that area. Any other commissioners want to speak to this?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Boswell, you're not alone. I share your concern.
Commissioner Fuentes is here. I, I believe this is the same company that has a facility on Broadway between Cullen and, oh goodness, Cullen and Silver Lake Parkway. I, I hope I'm correcting that in that comment. If allowed, if Council chooses, I, I would, my one comment is, I, I go to that, my wife goes to that, my kids go to that. It's, it's a great facility for a car wash, and it is self, it, it runs itself, except for, at the end, there's a couple of guys that might dry your car off with a, with a towel. They do offer free vacuuming, and, and so it stays quite busy. You typically have to wait five, 10 minutes in line before your car makes it through. It is that busy. I, I would only caution that, that sometimes there's a lot of cars stacked, and I hope that they designed the drive, the entry drive, to where if they do stack, they don't stick out in the street. You don't want to, you don't want to hinder traffic. And, and that, that was the concern when they first opened up on Broadway. There was a little bit of back, backup on Broadway, but, but since then, I haven't seen it, you know, since their grand opening and everybody wanted their car washed, of course, then. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Darwish, is there, is that, is there another car wash that y'all, that you own? Maybe we lost him. Okay, Mayor?
Washes across Houston. They've designed 20 car washes across state of Texas. And wherever Blue Wave goes, it has a high rating, high backing behind it. The car wash has been recently redesigned so that it runs more efficiently, so it gets people through the tunnel faster. So there's less stacking. And if you look at overall ratings, there are four stars and above. And they usually actually promote business in the area. We partnered with Starbucks, we partnered with other small businesses that we kind of tacked along with. That was the intention of us working with Arby's on Unit B, was to kind of just promote the business in that area. The building looks nice. It's not some typical trashy building. It's something that usually brings the community more together and promotes business.
Thank you.
Could I ask one follow-up question? And I apologize, this is Henry Forces again, for the record. I see that, I see that there's some gray at the bottom of that drawing. They look like parking spaces. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't where vacuuming was going to occur, right there at the frontage on, on Shadow Creek Parkway. I'm hoping that's just parking only.
The Architect Review Committee is acquiring us to add additional parking. Any other questions? Or concerns?
I just had a comment for the landowner. Um, I did notice that this project is in zone AE, it's in the floodplain. I don't really see anywhere where you're going to mitigate for that on your site plan, and it's a very small track to fit this on, but I just thought maybe you might want to be aware of that. But that was all I had to say.
And has the. Provided. Overall, before we got onto it, up to 90% of the site being paved. So we don't have to worry about that. And we've already raised the site to match the FFE, go to floodplain elevation.
Commissioners, anything, any other questions or comments? Okay, Mayor Reed, I think we're done. Thank you.
Moving then to city council. And I'll start with Councilmember Alondo, your comments.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just wanted to say, address a couple of comments from the Planning and Zoning Commission, specifically from Commissioner Boswell, and just wanted to say, I appreciated her comments and, and that I, I want the members of our Planning and Zoning Commission, in addition to our other boards, to feel and appreciate that we put them on those boards for a reason because of their unique experiences and, you know, whether or not they think an opinion might be unpopular. We're very grateful to hear it and to consider that as part of the full spectrum of opinions that are in the city of Pearland. So I, I appreciate Commissioner Boswell saying that despite, you know, feeling like it might not be popular, and I would encourage everyone to continue doing that. I've also experienced the, the feeling of frustration as you drive around town and you see a certain type of business repeated over and over again. And, and it can feel frustrating and, and you can want to do something about it. And certainly, people will call you and want to do something about it. What I would say, what, what I would, you know, something else that I have to keep in mind is we're not a centrally planned economy, you know, in, in Pearland or, or in the United States, and, and that's really what makes us special, that we, we don't pick exactly where stuff goes. And the records show in, in the US and in history, you know, when the government thinks it knows what is wanted and what is not wanted by the market, it doesn't usually do a great job of picking. We're not supposed to be picking winners and losers, whether that's individual businesses or whether that's industries. And, and so, really, the value of our system is that the individual decisions of, of enterprises and firms that want to invest in, in a community end up making better decisions than we can, you know, sitting here in our chairs. So my point of view, I, I think CUPs play a very important process. And I, I think what they really are for is when there's a potentially very negative impact of a certain type of development on the community that, that requires digging into further. And there are plenty of examples of that. And so I guess my question on this for staff is just looking at the history of this, are, are we considering this for CUP tonight strictly because it, it is an auto use, or are there other concerns, are there other negative impacts of car wash, car washes specifically that raise it concerns for the city of Pearland?
Councilmember Orlando, Martin Griggs with Community Development. What has driven this use being a conditional use permit is the, the automotive intensity. So previous councils have requested that the majority of automotive-driven uses become conditional use permits. In particular, the previous discussion with the site, we worked with applicants when the conditional use permit was an ordinance-driven process in flipping the building, flipping the car wash tunnel from the right-hand side to the left-hand side in order to increase the amount of stacking that would happen on the site. So what we're seeing is, again, a very similar outcome to what we worked on in 2017.
Gotcha. Okay, so I, I certainly appreciate that as, you know, traffic stacking as a legitimate concern. I also just wanted to ask, is there any concern about, you know, runoff, water runoff from, you know, what's being used in, in these car washes? Or is that something that's we've resolved at this point in terms of just safety and water pollution?
Though, uh, not to speak on behalf of Public Works, but our pre-treatment coordinator will work diligently with the applicant during permitting to ensure that water quality issues are taken care of.
Great. Okay, so yeah, with, with that being said, if if, if those concerns are addressable in terms of the traffic stacking and the the, the water treatment, and, and the only other concern is with the number of, of these, the density of, of car washes, then I, I would be inclined to support the project. Thank you.
Oh.
Mayor, um, yeah, I, I appreciate the comments from P and Z. I'm, I'm more of, of, we shouldn't pick winners and losers. You can already see some of the liquor stores that have gone out of business. And I mean, that's, that's free market and that's competition. So if, if somebody wants to, to, to plop down, you know, their capital and, and risk it, you know, I, I trust they've done their homework in terms of market studies and everything else. So I appreciate them working with the, the site plan to get the stacking in there correctly. And, and I, I don't have, have any issues with this one, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Little.
Market guy too. I don't think the government should pick winners and losers. And these guys have been in the car wash business for a number of years. They own a lot of them. I'm sure they've done their homework. They know whether or not this is a good location. And when this was in the CUP process a couple of years ago, a few years ago, we went over this ad nauseam. And they addressed all of our concerns. So this is, to me, this is just a, a reapplication of a former CUP that was approved and unfortunately expired. So I'll be supporting it.
Okay, Councilmember Nadas.
So I too share the concerns of P and Z or appreciate them, I suppose. To the point that was made on free market and not picking winners and losers, I, I typically do support that as well. However, with gas stations, I do have a little carve-out in that I think the point has been made previously at several meetings that gas stations tend to remain gas stations, and they're very difficult to turn into anything else. So it's the point of, you know, a gas station does not survive. It, it's more difficult for the market to come in, recapture that, turn it into something else, would be a benefit to the community at large. So I think with that, and then some other concerns, I think, just from car washes, I've really, over the years, kind of lost interest in commercial car wash operations. I think there are newer, more environmentally friendly options for car washes that are available nowadays. And I would, you know, just like to maybe eventually see us kind of move in that direction as, as a society, I suppose. But that is my, my carve-out for the free market is that, you know, the business itself ceases to operate, you know, if it cannot be converted, if there's a burden that's passed on to the community in the form of a piece of land that just sits there undeveloped for many, 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 many years, or, you know, is difficult to remediate. You know, that's, that's for my carve-out. So I'm at this particular point in time, not inclined to support it. Thank you.
Quick comment. I, I agree with most of what Member Hernandez said, apart from the social engineering part, but this is not a, a gas station, correct? Mr. Griggs?
Correct, this is not a gas station.
So I, I, I think that Mr. Hernandez's, Member Hernandez's comments are appropriate for the final item that we're considering in terms of the, the difficult reuse and the negative in the economics literature externalities caused by gas stations, but I don't think those are really caused by this car wash. And if the only, if the only opposition is a desire to engineer society away from using car washes, I would caution that that might be not an adequate reason for declining this business.
Okay. Councilmember Owens, do you have any wrap-up comments?
Yes, sir, I do. And, and this is amazing. Hernandez and I agree on a lot of stuff tonight. But, but, you know, the thing about it, I'm sure this is just a simple car wash, that's what it is. And I agree with Ashley on the P and Z that this is not the best use of that land. Shadow Creek Parkway is an extraordinary place of development down through there, which I, I think there's a lot more advantages there than just a car wash. And the thing about it, I'm, I'm sure this just a car wash, it's no gas station, it's no convenience store, anything like that. But I don't see any advantage for the city of Pearland for putting in another car wash. I don't know how many car washes we have that's within the next, you know, five mile radius of a car wash, gas station, convenience store type thing that, that we have there. But the thing about it, I don't, I don't think this is the best use of the land that we have there. Shadow Creek Parkway is, is is a roadway that is very positive for the city of Pearland on, on different things of, of different building outs, of commercial type development, as we have along through there. And I don't think just anything that it brings anything to the table is another car wash. So I appreciate the comments that, that's been had upon there. And also for Ashley, that she did discussion about that. And I think she's exactly right, that there's other other things that could be developed from that, that piece of property. So I would not vote for this at all. Thank you.
Moving item number three, is there any further comment from council? Item number three is filed for a staff wrap-up comment.
Staff wrap-up comment consists of, there was a request for a number of car washes that are within the vicinity. So I looked at the 288 corridor by Broadway and generally the, the Shadow Creek Ranch area. There are three car washes that are on Broadway. And then there is a car wash that is fronting out onto the 288 that has its address off of Smith Ranch Road. So there's about four that are kind of in the immediate vicinity that been additional that are outside of that immediate area.
Appreciate that, Gordon. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Additionally, the resolution that is before council has no, no conditions proposed.
Okay.
That completes our staff wrap-up. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, good. Now, as I mentioned in the previous public hearing, which is a special meeting, what we've gone through is a process of discussion and making a decision on the appropriateness of the, of the, of the recommendation of this particular development. And of course, that morphs into a city council new business item, which I shall ask Councilmember Little if he would present for our consideration.
Consideration of possible action resolution number R 2020-CUP 20-00010, smooth. Do we have a second?
Second. Woody Owens.
Did I hear a second?
Yes, sir.
Well, motion and a second, Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem, we do have motion second on the floor here.
Member Little?
Hi.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Owens?
No.
Member Orlando? Member Carbone? The, the motion carries three to two to approve resolution number R 2020-CUP 20-00010.
And looking at my clock, we are journeying this item at nine twenty-two. And moving to work up special meeting number three, which is, and I'll ask the chairman of the planning commission, if you read into the record, the heading for number three.
Thank you, Mayor. Joint special meeting number three is a request by Sally Shashani, Heights Engineering LLC applicant on behalf of Kashif Kabani of Mazian Property, Inc., owner for approval of a conditional use permit, CUP, to allow gasoline station and self-service auto wash in conjunction with proposed, proposed convenience store within the Shadow Creek Plan Development PD District on approximately 1.3859 acres of land. The general location is the 12,700 Shadow Creek Parkway. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Moving item A, application information and case summary. We'll move to the staff report. Mr. Griggs?
Here's Mohammed Burima with city staff.
Oh, I'm sorry. Staff report.
Yes, Mayor, this is Mohammed with city staff. Again, this is a request for approval of a conditional use permit to allow gasoline station and self-service auto wash in conjunction with a proposed convenience store within the Shadow Creek Plan Development District on approximately 1.3 acres of land. And that is located in southeast corner of Shadow Creek Parkway and Kingsley Road intersection. The subject property is currently vacant, and the applicant is proposing to develop a four hun, uh, 4,400 square feet convenient store with a gas station capable of dispensing fuel to 10 vehicles and self-service auto wash. The convenience store, the proposed, proposed convenience store is allowed by right within the subject zoning district. However, the proposed gas station and the self-service auto wash use is required approval of conditional use permits. So therefore, the applicant is requesting a approval of a CUP, actually two CUPs, one for gas station and one for self-service auto wash in conjunction with the convenience store. I have not received any public comments in favor or against this proposed request. Again, location is 12,700 Shadow Creek Parkway. Martin, if you can go to the next slide, this is. Uh, Martin, if you can go to the next slide, this is the zoning map and shows the location of that gas station. Again, subject property is currently undeveloped. It is surrounded by a, a planned development. It's basically the Shadow Creek plan development from all sides. Um, surrounding land, land uses, uh, we have apartments located on the south side as well as the east side. Uh, the west property is undeveloped as well as the property to the north. Uh, if you go to the next slide, that is the future land use plan. And the property is designated for retail offices and services at this particular location. Um, and that would allow for a wide variety of commercial businesses and activities. Um, if you go to the next slide, that's the proposed site plan by the applicant, uh, how the site would be laid out. You can see the convenience store, again, the convenience stores allowed by right in this particular location. And then, um, the gas station and the auto wash are located, uh, on the front and to the side. Um, again, it's 4,400 square foot building. Um, uh, Martin, can you go to the next slide? Uh, these are the proposed renderings of the gas station as well as the auto wash. Um, if you go to the next slide, um, this is a photo looking back into the proposed location here. Uh, this is a driveway that's being built uh, to connect to, uh, Shadow Creek Parkway. There are a number of uses. Uh, in the back, uh, there is a self-storage building that was approved and it's moving along. Um, to the west of this, actually the hot quarter is, is still going to be vacant land, so there's no proposal down there. Uh, if you go to the next slide, Martin, uh, this is, uh, looking back towards the, uh, towards the east and you can see the apartments in the background in the south and the east of the property. Next slide. Uh, this is a map that shows the locations of existing gas stations and within the area within one mile and within two miles. So there's one gas station located uh, within one mile of this one. It is actually the opposite corner, uh, the south, uh, I'm sorry, the northwest corner of, uh, Kingsley and Shadow Creek. There's one location with the red dot, uh, also at, uh, northwest, uh, quarter of the city, but that's actually outside the city boundary. Uh, and then you have three gas stations within two miles. Uh, and those are actually to the east. One is, uh, the Kroger station. Uh, one is the, at, at the Kroger, um, uh, store in front of the Kroger store. Uh, there's one next to it, and then there's one on the east side of 288. So there are three, and then, uh, you have two more down, uh, by, um, 288, one on east side, one on west side. So those are the gas stations that are located in the area. I'm not aware of the, any car wash along Shadow Creek. Uh, I, I put the Google map, I couldn't see any, and I drove by, I, I haven't seen any on, uh, Shadow Creek. Uh, Martin, go to the next slide. So staff has looked at the criteria and it seems like the proposed CUP is consistent with that, uh, future land use, uh, map for commercial, uh, for retail and services in that area. Uh, Shadow Creek is designated as a thoroughfare plan, major thoroughfare, uh, ma- major thoroughfare with, uh, sufficient width, uh, properties planted, utilities that are available within the area. And based on that, staff is recommending approval of the proposed request. Uh, and I think that concludes the staff report.
Okay. Moving to item number two.
I'm not sure where, well, echoing with you, but, uh, uh, item number two is applicant presentation. I'll ask, uh, Mayor Pro Tim to present that individual for our cons- for the, for his message.
Martin, do we have the applicant, uh, hold on to the presentation?
Not, uh, see that anyone had signed up to speak, uh, for this. They were notified. Um, that they are not on my list.
Uh, and no one has signed up to speak for or against this proposal? Okay, mayor, that, uh, wraps up applicant presentation and public comments.
Okay, moving to item number three. Persons wish to speak for or against the proposed request. I'll come back to our more pro- pro team.
There are none.
None of that, huh? Moving to item B, which is, uh, an opportunity of the planning commission, the city council and the staff to again discuss all of the issues they feel are appropriate to, to, to share. And, um, starting with the planning and zoning commission, I'll ask the chair to, um, share your thoughts on this item.
Thank you, mayor. Commissioner Dansby?
Yes, uh, I, I would be opposed to this. Uh, uh, honestly torn. Part of me as a banker, uh, hates to tell a business owner what they can and can't do with their land. That said, uh, this is a pretty hotly contested little corner in, in Shadow Creek area. And I know I can speak for many who question the storage unit that's going in, the senior living center across the street. There's a gas station already on the other corner, uh, soon to be some new apartments, hopefully the last on another corner. And then there, I believe there's an open piece to that corner as well, which would be the southwest corner that looks prime real estate for what would soon to be a proposed gas station at some point in the future. But, uh, so I, I would be against it. This, this Kingsley is, it is a busy road. If you're going north through the bellway, it's highly traveled. It looked to me from the drawings, uh, that I just saw tonight that, um, the, it appeared that the car wash was on the west side, which is what everyone who drives down Kingsley from Shadow Creek Ranch will see. Um, I don't, you know, that, that setup is, is, uh, to say the least, not, not very, you know, pretty, not very, doesn't put forth a very good footprint as far as I'm concerned. You know, we just had the same discussion about gas stations. Uh, I believe, uh, councilman Orlando and councilman Hernandez were discussing. So I, I, I have a problem with it as well. I, 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 I think the, you know, between a, a number, gas stations rank right up there with a number of other businesses in town that we have a lot of. And that if you're telling me we're going to put another one on another corner, I, I, I have some issues with that. You can see how it looks to me like on the west side of this drawing elevation that that's the car wash that will be, uh, the whole side as you're driving north down Kingsley, I believe. So that's all I had to say. I'd be opposed if I had the ability to vote against it.
Commissioner Fortes?
I'll pass to the end.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Boswell? Commissioner Henry, anything?
I, I think the biggest obstacles they are going to have for developing this is going to be the entrance coming off Shadow Creek Parkway. Um, it is about a little over 300 feet from the intersection, but I, I would assume, I, I can't tell where it is if they have room to make a left turn lane in through there, but I would assume the city would make them do that. And, uh, for safety reasons, um, I do like the fact that they have this 30-foot access easement. It is, it is also another track that is in the flood. And I don't see that any of these tracks have been elevated or raised. So my concern is with this, looking at the site layout, where are they going to put their detention? Where are they going to put their mitigation? But I love the idea of a gas station, um, in this corner. I just wish it was more on the corner, but I do think it would be a very busy gas station, considering what it would bring. And so I would say, I, I would vote for it if I could, except for, I would just caution the owners that the setup, uh, I just don't see where they're going to put the detention and mitigation, just based on what they have. And they should be concerned about the entrance coming off Shadow Creek Parkway. Being they're not exactly on the corner, but they're close enough that I don't know if they have enough room to do a left turn lane. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Wicker?
Possibly misunderstood some of the, um, original staff comments, but if I'm correct, um, I believe that, uh, staff reported that, uh, the, the service station could be put in as a matter of right. And I guess the, uh, conditional use as for the, um, uh, car wash, is that correct?
The convenience store is allowed by right. Gasoline sales, uh, requires a conditional use permit and the self-service car wash requires a conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you. No other comment?
Commissioner Fortes, I think we're back to you.
I, I, my biggest concern is access from the north side of Shadow Creek Parkway. I'm sure they will work that out, uh, but, but from my past experience working with text dot, getting a cut through or, uh, an Splinate opening is difficult at best uh, on Shadow Creek Parkway. Um, and, uh, a comment, ju- just to clarify, uh, Shadow Creek Ranch, um, has um, accounted for, I hope that's the right word, all of the detention. Um, these sites may show up as in the floodplain. Uh, I believe they all have the, uh, LOMARS, the letters of map revision. So I, I don't believe those are issues, uh, detention and/or the floodplain. Um, but staff can correct me on that, but that, that's the way it was, uh, when I was there until I left in 2011. Um, as for a gas station, uh, they seem to always be busy. Um, and if we're not buying in our, in our neighborhoods, we're buying them some, we're buying gas somewhere else. We all have cars, we all need gas. So it's, it's, it's a tough call. I, I know when the council decided to make these, uh, uh, conditioning use permits for, 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 uh, gasoline and, and car washes and such. I believe that was in about 2014, 2015. I didn't care for it then, and I, I'm not sure I care for it now, but, but it's good, good discussion for us. Good, good thoughts. I'm glad I don't have to make this decision.
Thank you. Um, my biggest concern is the traffic in that area and this being right past, I think it's right past the intersection. Someone said 30 feet, I, or 300 feet. I can't remember now exactly how far it was, but just turning into this right after you get through the intersection, um, let me see, I see it. Thank you. It's, that's my biggest concern here, not to mention the number of car washes and gas stations in that area. It's just traffic. That's all. Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Okay, moving to item two would be city council. And we'll start again with, uh, Councilor Bowens. Councilman Rowan, you're still with us?
I'm here, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Appreciate it, mayor. Uh, a store, gas station and a car wash. You know, what are we going to be known for? Car washes, gas stations and nail places. Uh, that's what it is. And I think, uh, Dansby hit it right on the nail head, uh, through there. You know, the thing about it, you know, everybody needs gas for the cars, everybody needs car wash, but do you need so many? How many do we have within a, a two-mile radius? Seven gas stations within two miles. I mean, you know, you're not going to run out of gas before you get there on, on the gas station. But ultimately, what does this bring to the table for Pearland? I mean, you know, I don't know. If we come in and, and another convenience store, another, the gas station, another car wash, what does this bring to the table for Pearland? This is not what we envisioned Pearland being in the, in, in the future, years ago. And, and mayor, you know better than anybody else, uh, than anybody else would, would have on what we wanted the vision for Pearland to be. But it, it just seemed like it's just continuously on the main thoroughfares to come in with gas stations, car washes and things of that nature and convenience stores. Um, big positive, I don't think, I don't know what that brings to the table for Pearland. What is that for Pearland? What are we building up to be in Pearland? I just don't think that's it. So short answer is no for me. Go to the next one, mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Owens?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, mayor, I just wanted to say, um, with regard to this item and the last item, um, to you, mayor, and all the PNC commissioners, the applicant staff and county fellow council members. I did have to, uh, step away for a second earlier, so I came back and accidentally opened the wrong agenda item, but I did plan to vote no on both of them this evening. So my apologies to everybody for kind of being, uh, off the agenda there for a moment on the last item, but, uh, my comments on that item do apply to this one. And, uh, so, you know, I, I apologize and also want to, uh, thank member Orlando for giving me that gentle nudge to bring me back to the right item. So, um, but yeah, I, like I said, my thoughts on gas stations are, you know, once they're there, it's, it's difficult to have anything else be there. And, uh, like member Owens said, it's, it's hard to, hard to believe it, but he and I believe on, on a lot of stuff tonight. So, um, you know, it's kind of like, uh, I oftentimes use the analogy whenever I talk to people about zoning. If tomorrow we had an agenda item that, uh, got rid of zoning altogether, I would probably vote for it. But, I mean, we have zoning in this city, so as long as we have it, I'm going to utilize it at my discretion. And, uh, I think that, uh, gas stations are one of those things that, you know, are just not, um, something that I'm in favor of at this particular moment. Um, so I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to speak on that, mayor. And again, um, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Little?
Um, in looking at the aerial view of this, uh, location, it's, it's surrounded by high density res- residential. Uh, and I, I think there's a need there. Um, we become a nation of people who want convenience, and this is a convenience store. You can go one place, you can get your gas, you can buy your, your drink and chips, you can get your car washed. So uh, again, I'm a free market guy. I, I don't have a problem with this location. It's, it's a busy intersection, a lot of residences around it, and, uh, I, I don't see it going out of business and having to worry about them taking gas tanks out of the ground. So, uh, that's all I have there.
Councilmember Carbone?
Um, I, I had a, a couple of questions, um, on the site plan, but I guess if the applicant's not here, we can't get them answered. Uh, I, I guess Josh, can you confirm there's nobody on there that, that could be related to this case?
Uh, from everything that I can see on this meeting, it, it doesn't appear. I have one call in user. I don't know if they're related to this one, so I can unmute them and just have them identify themselves. They called in late, uh, but I don't know if they're related to this case. So let me try that and see. Uh, I have a call in user with the, uh, phone number, uh, it starts with 281705. Will you identify yourself, please? A call in user 281705, please identify yourself. You're unmuted.
This is Val Canisti.
Oh, okay.
I don't have any input on this.
All right, thank you. I know, sir, I, I don't have anybody else on here.
All right, thanks, Josh. Um, I mean, with, with what, uh, what Dansby said, um, I mean, it's a tough call. I'd, I'd like the applicant to be on to answer some questions, so I'm leaning no. Um, but if you do, i- if you look at it from a, a traffic flow, if you're, if you're leaving Shadow Creek Ranch headed north, there's no easy access. I mean, you turn right on Shadow Creek, there's nowhere on the right until you get on to 288. There's nowhere on the right on Kingsley. So I mean, I, I don't know. I always look for easy and easy out. And so I do see, even if you turn left on Shadow Creek, I mean, I guess you've got one right there in that corner. I mean, heading to 288, you're just, it, it's not there. So, um, I don't know. I'm torn, but since the applicant's not here, I'm going to lean towards no.
Councilmember Alondo?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I'm
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm glad these items came up back-to-back tonight, uh, and just kinda lets us flesh out our, the principles that we use for making these kind of zoning decisions. I just think the biggest one, or at least one that I would want to impress upon everyone making these decisions, is that I, I don't think we want a government that is sitting here and saying, this is the number of donut shops allowed in Pearland. This is the number of mattress stores allowed in the city of Pearland. That, that's a, a very dangerous road to be going down. Um, government shouldn't be in the business of determining what, what is needed and what is not needed in that context. Um, but I think this, this, but as I mentioned last time, you, you can, you know, we should limit stuff for other reasons that, that causes a community harm. And so with gas stations in particular, you have enormous environmental impacts uh, in terms of the runoff, in terms of the vapors. Uh, then they're difficult to repurpose, uh, especially because there is that contamination of, of the ground. And as, you know, most of us know, at the corner of uh, 35 and 518, you know, you just have uh, um, it, it can be difficult to repurpose a gas station in the future and, and that affects everybody when it's not repurposed. Uh, and then lastly, and I, I think least importantly, but still important, it cha- it, as evidenced by the number of people I've spoken to, a lot of people across, you know, east end of town or west end of town, across parties, across ages, people think the gas stations change the character of a community. And people fundamentally should be able to determine what the character of their community is a- at some broad level. And there's a pretty widespread consensus that these do that. Uh, and so not because there are too many gas stations, but because of those other uh, important reasons, uh, I will be uh, opposed to this measure. Thank you.
Moving into our agenda to item number three, is give the staff an opportunity to do a little wrap-up here.
Mary, again, Martin Griggs for Community Development. Um, I have quite a few notes on this one that I would like to share with uh, city council and the planning commission. Uh, the first is that uh, there have been no plans uh, for a meeting and an opening uh, on Shadow Creek Parkway. Um, second, uh, the site uh, has gone through uh, the LOMAR process. So that's the letter of map revision process uh, for elevating the property. Uh, third, the driveway that you see uh, on the screen uh, that comes out onto or provides access to Shadow Creek Parkway, uh, that is under construction as it is a part of the 30-foot access easement uh, for the commercial subdivision. Uh, so that, that access point, uh, which is uh, approximately 400 feet from the intersection, uh, will be uh, constructed uh, for this uh, commercial subdivision. Uh, last, well, second to last, uh, there was a pre-development uh, for uh, this uh, use and, or these uses and this site plan. Um, and uh, the, the concerns of the uses uh, were shared with applicants at that time. Uh, we worked with them, uh, or staff worked with them uh, to provide a, this site plan, which is a, a better site plan. Um, and with that said, uh, they proposed uh, some additional landscaping. Uh, as you can see, uh, it may be difficult to see, uh, but what they're showing as being required landscaping uh, as 35.2 uh, 35.2 inches, uh, and they're providing 49, mind you, sorry, I'm reading the parking calculation there. Uh, they're showing a minimum 17 trees uh, to be provided and they're proposing 55 trees with 455 shrubs. So that is a significant uh, improvement uh, to the landscaping. And as such, uh, staff has uh, written a condition for uh, the enhanced landscaping through provided in quantities indicated on the site plan uh, within the applicant's packet. So uh, that is the only condition that uh, will be or is within the resolution uh, that's proposed uh, for council's consideration next. Thank you, Mary.
Okay. With our staff wrapped up, um, obviously our discussion so far and uh, the, the considerations of various issues regarding development in the city, uh, this particular joint special meeting requires that that morphs into a city council new business item. And uh, it takes a while for these work through, through the system to get to this point. So it's, uh, this is the final decision-making process. And what I'd like to do is ask Councilmember Owens if he would present this for our consideration.
Yes, sir. Resolution, uh, uh, resolution to 2020, CUP 20 dash 00012, a sub move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, I believe we have a motion second on the floor for your consideration.
Okay.
Keep here.
Okay, Member Owens, how do you vote? Sorry, I was muted. I'm so sorry.
Resounding no's. Thank you, Crystal.
Oh, good, Crystal.
I'm sorry, Member Owens? Okay, Member Orlando?
No.
Member Carbone? Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez? Question fails four to one.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And uh, I think this has been a good exercise for both the planning commission, the city council and our staff and the uh, the citizens who want to put projects inside of our city. And I think it's a, it's a pretty thorough process. I think it's uh, something we have given a lot of thought to. But uh, we're at the point now where I need to adjourn this system. And I would like to adjourn this item, is item number five, adjourn this at 9:53.